Okay.
And all right, Mr. Chair, we're live on YouTube and ready to go when you are.
Whenever it says. Are we good? Are we recording?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Welcome. Welcome you all to the September 18th, 2024 meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. This evening, we have two public hearings. The first is on the regulatory amendments to implement 2SSB 5290 concerning consolidating local permit review processes. The second is on the draft 2025 comprehensive plan amendments cycle docket list. And then there we have 10 proposed amendments. But first things first, Ms. Devereaux, please call Row.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Alan Talbo.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Mark Herr.
Present.
Lynn Larson is excused, as well as Philip Combs.
Okay.
And Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Regarding the September 4th, 2024 minutes, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Then I will accept the motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Then move Lindholm, second by Mr. Herr, to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Ms. Devereaux, we have any agenda updates? Or? Do we have any updates?
No, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I will reference to you. Okay. All right. So now we're at the portion of the meeting where we have a public comment. Do we have anyone present or virtual?
Mr. Chair, there's no one virtual. I'm not sure if there's anyone in the room.
It's empty.
There is no one in the building.
All right. Thank you. So we just closed public comment portion. Public hearing. And at this time, I will ask, I would be, it would be who? Ms. Spear?
Actually, Ms. Silva is going to do the review.
Okay, Ms. Silva, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members and members of the public as they join in on this exciting evening tonight. Again, this is a kind of recap of our last study session on September 4th related to proposed amendments for Senate Bill 5290 as it relates to local project review. Next slide, please. So just to recap from that study session, this proposed code amendment package really addresses kind of state law changes that occurred last year as it relates to land use and environmental permit review procedures. Specifically, a lot of those changes went into effect in 2023. However, we have some new instituted timelines coming into effect beginning in January 1st of 2025, as well as performance reporting. Next slide, please. So kind of go over the next three slides. We'll go over some major changes related to Senate Bill 5291 happens to be determination of completeness, identifying certain procedural actions to ensure minimum submitted requirements on applications, as well as when the city must determine if it's complete or incomplete within 28 calendar days. If we do not make that written notification, it becomes procedurally complete by the 29th day. On notice of applications, there were some changes to state law, not only on the contents, but also timeline for the issuance for the city to identify a notice of application for certain application types 14 days after an application is deemed complete. And last but not least, the proposed state law, excuse me, the state law change also requiring notice of decisions, which have to be issued 14 days after a local decision by a city or county government. It also notes minimum contents of that notice of decision, including the appropriate appeal process. Next slide, please. Another major change, a very substantive change to Senate Bill 5290 required new permit timelines. This goes into effect January 1st of the new year and really affects our type 1 through 3 application types already established in code today and a variety of different timelines associated with that. So for a type 1 decision, by 5290, we have to issue a decision within 65 days. This time clock does not include requests for information, for example. On a type 2 decision, it's required a decision date for 100 days. Type 2 decisions typically are like shoreline substantial development permits, for example. In a type 3 decision, like a conditional use permit, for example, requires a decision within 170 days. Common between type 1 and type 2 applications, those are administrative decisions issued by the department and they are appealable. Comparative to a type 3, like in conditional use permit, the decision maker is the hearing examiner, which their decision also cannot be appealable. Next slide, please. Last, one of the major changes required annual performance reporting. So the city of Lakewood is subject to this, not only based on our population, but also we are part of the Billable Lands jurisdiction under the Growth Management Act. Our first performance report is due in March of next year and it looks over 2024. So we already know, as we've come to a close for this year, we will be doing hand calculations based on the new reporting requirements because of our permit system is not organized in a manner or generates reports to meet those minimum standards. So we'll be going application by application and it'll be a great time for all involved. And the sense of that is to really, are we meeting the timelines related to 5290 and assess that performance? Another key element of that new state law change is in 2026, if we're not meeting those timelines over 50% or more of the time, we must enact additional measures to ensure we get closer to moving that needle. So that may be a consideration down the road. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go over briefly kind of proposed amendments in three different chapters entitled 18A. So specifically, Chapter 18A10, there's kind of three different categories of proposed changes in this chapter. Kind of consolidate, reorganize, and clarify. So many of the proposed amendments in this chapter redirects permit procedures to 18A20, which is the administration, and that's intended to streamline code for ease of use. In addition to, there's proposed amendments to recognize the department reorganization as what is now planning in public works. And last but not least, as part of 5290, there's clear requirements that we cannot require a site plan for interior structure alterations. That's been a proposed change, but we also define what that really means. Next slide, please. Next proposed chapter for amendments has kind of two broad categories for proposed amendments, and that's to not only modify to ensure transparency and streamline the process, but also streamline, incorporate some of the 5290 requirements, including the timelines that we just covered, but also refines current code language when it comes to complete applications. What are the associated timelines and the turnaround times to make sure that gets complete? But also those minimum standards and timing for notice of application, but also notice of decision. In addition to, there are several proposed amendments to clarify what is considered a major or minor modification to approved permit. Our code is relatively silent on this topic and it becomes a code interpretation on a regular day. We want to be transparent what that is, but also what is the appropriate process to modify that permit depending on what you would like to do. Next slide, please. And last but not least, proposed changes to 18A30, not just for housekeeping purposes to ensure internal consistency, but also redirecting them back to 18A20, whereas the bulk of the process and procedures and timelines for a variety of different application types. But it also proposes and lays the foundation for consideration in the future to allow certain types of uses to be administratively approved through an administrative conditional use permit. Meaning, they would still have public notice like a type 2 decision, but they wouldn't necessarily have to go to the hearing examiner to have that public hearing process. So allows what is appropriate in a future decision action and review by this body, but also city council on what may be appropriate instead of getting to that conditional use stage. So it sets the criteria and what that may be considered later down the road. Next slide, please. And just to recap on the schedule again, on September 4th, we had a study session that we went a lot more deeper dive in the proposal here tonight. Tonight is supposed to be the public hearing, considering testimony on the procedural changes. And then as we enter the month of October, we hope to sit down again and talk about the proposal, deliberate and make proposed recommendations for that. And with that said, once the Planning Commission wraps up their due diligence and tasks related to this, we'll head to city council with a study session on October 14th, with hope of a public hearing on the 21st of October, with final action by the beginning of November, hopefully November 4th, with everything going into effect by the new year. Next slide, please. With that, that was a very quick recap of something that was probably about a 45-minute hour conversation at our last meeting. But with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have at this time, but also recommend opening for a public hearing if those wish to provide comments.
We will open that public hearing as soon as we get comments from the commissioners. Ms. Talbo.
I do have just a few minor questions that are neither here or there, but just for my own understanding. The determination of completeness checklist or that step, is that, are those documents subject to Public Record Act requests?
So a lot of those determination of completeness, so part of what the existing code requires and you'll see very little change in that section in 18A20 is the director is required to identify not only what is a complete application, but the application forms and to make those publicly available. So currently, all application forms are available on the department's website. Many of them include a checklist of what needs to be included. What we hope as part of our operational improvements as we enter the new year is actually rethinking those applications and making them more user-friendly. We talked a little bit about how can we convert those to a number of different languages as well. So we're still exploring that. Very hard to find software to do that capability on a regular basis. But that is something we hope to launch in the new year with a whole bunch of stuff that's going into effect as part of the comp plan update, but also this as well.
And then I had two more questions. And the first one is, as far as ADUs and ADU permits, you know, some cities like streamline their process by making kind of like a pre. What am I trying to say? Like a, like a, like a.
Like a pre-design?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
That's something we have. I know Ms. Spear can speak specifically to the ADU regulation changes as part of the comp plan update. But some of the implementation that jurisdictions use is like, they do like a request for proposals for a variety of different architectural firms to submit ADU designs that would be compliant with the code. The city would use that as kind of a base building permit. So if you pick out of the, let's say, five, this is more of a streamlined, it's just like, oh, that's what you put in. We're just checking now setbacks and site considerations at that point. That is something we have definitely talked about internally is something we want to institute maybe in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last question I had is just, just for my, just I think for my own career or interest. I had thought that the economic development arm of community planning and economic development before it became planning and public works. I thought economic development was part of planning. I just wanted to know if, if that arm is still under that umbrella or if that went somewhere else.
Great question. We have multiple arms now, not just two. Economic development is still part of the planning and public works portfolio. Actually, as part of our reorganization, you saw different group mergers. So our economic development manager, Becky Newton, also oversees our permit services or so a permit counter services is part of that external facing. So we're making some improvements there in how our customer interface. We're also evaluating opening up the second floor for customers. That is something we are working with our city manager on and when and if that is appropriate and ensuring the safety of staff, but also the public that would go to that level.
Great. Thank you. They are such an important aspect and closely tied to public work exam planning. So just wanted to understand that they were still.
Absolutely.
Mr. Herr?
Chair, one more question. Excuse me. The, the change in timelines that have been proposed in here. Forgive me if this is too simple of a question, but is there an option later on or is there any intent to have what might be deemed a an expeditious delivery of a permit that doesn't require so much detailed look and analyzation? I can't say a word, but, but is there an idea for that in the future or is that in my way off base here?
Are we talking like concepts about like expedited review or base plan permits? Okay. We currently have somewhat of an expedited review process, at least currently for our building permits where an applicant can cover the cost of a third-party consultant to review building permits per the international code, but also state building code council rules. So there are certain things we can't change. What some jurisdictions do institute, especially larger jurisdictions, they typically institute kind of base plans. So if you're, and this is typically where you see a lot of subdivision activity where a city of Lakewood, not so much. We see about two to nine, maybe 11 lock creations, not the 500 units you may see in unincorporated Pierce County, for example. But typically, they establish kind of a base plan application. So there's, for example, you have certain base models of a home within a subdivision, five different models. Once we review those plans and you're applying that into different phases of a subdivision, we don't have to re-review everything. It's the same thing over and over. We're checking site considerations, your stormwater facilities connection. You have all your roads and all your land heaping approved per the broader preliminary plat itself. We have been talking about instituting that in a much smaller short plat process, for example, and to expedite that construction for permit stage because that's really where the huge costs are really happening for folks is when you already have contractors onsite and you're trying to mobilize and you want to get those structures up as soon as possible because of supply issues or the cost of supply. So that's something we're definitely looking at and looking into the new year in instituting.
Okay. And then one more question related to timelines. I am not a home builder or a construction engineer myself. However, a concern that I have heard from many builders is engineering review process happens multiple times in the same project by similarly credentialed individuals in different entities. Is there any hope to streamline that specifically throughout the process as we move forward?
I agree with industry professionals that provided that comment. I don't care what jurisdiction you work at. Development engineering review is one of the bottlenecks. You can't have enough engineers to get the permit review completed. One of the things that we're instituting, because I think I mentioned last time, right? Currently, we only have one budgeted FTE associate engineer to help with development engineering review. And they got over about 100 permits assigned to them. That's a lot of work for one person to do and this person may want to take a vacation at some point or, or take a sick day. So we instituted third-party review to assist in that as well, but like many industry sectors, the private sector is struggling to retain engineers for services as well. So they have backlogs. But with that said, part of the streamlining efforts that we're really looking at, and this will assist when we are able to really reevaluate our workflow processes within our permitting system is what is an appropriate reviewer or review discipline like development engineering? And do they really need to review this application type, this application type? Especially when we know there's going to be a site development permit, which is the more heavier civil infrastructure, stormwater design, civil plans are coming forward. Do they really need to review it twice at the land use entitlement stage as well as the construction permit stage? But we're having some serious conversations about that because it's not just at the land use stage, like a design review permit or a conditional use permit. That development engineering may have a review step like planning, for example. They have it at that construction permit for site development. And sometimes they have it at that building permit stage. They have three touchpoints currently in the system. And that's not necessarily too uncommon in jurisdictions. What we're questioning is at that land use entitlement stage, when we're not really there to verify 100% design for stormwater, for example, do they need to review that? There are some components where it's appropriate, especially when it triggers state environmental policy act or CIPA review. And we have to look at the adverse impacts to the environment. Traffic, for example, utilities, infrastructure, as well as stormwater considerations and what that may mean. What's that, what's that clear delineation on it? So great question and something we're diving deep on a workflow.
Thank you.
I had one question.
Ms. Wall, excuse me.
Yeah. And that is, I think that the streamlining is good. Safety is always important for the structural engineering because we've all seen buildings fall down, some intentionally, unfortunately. But do we have the personnel to really be looking at this and making sure that things are getting done the way they should be done? Especially with all of the additional living units that may be, I mean, my concern is that an unscrupulous person may make dwelling units that are not particularly habitable, but they might be affordable, but maybe the person doesn't have water or whatever. And so that, that to me, do you have the staff that you need to do with this?
Well, part of, so the application review, we're looking at new dwelling units or alterations to dwelling units. So part of that review, especially for building code, you are definitely, as well as fire code, you are definitely looking at life safety issues of the structure. Making sure it's not only habitable, but safe for the people to occupy. In addition to that, on the site aspect, we're also, their stormwater, water quality, those are also public health and safety things that also need to be considered. Traffic, for example. That's all incorporated into the application review for new or altered structures or land use permits, for example. We do have programs in place as part of our rental housing program when it comes to existing structures that are being rented out. And we do have an inspection program related to that to ensure the life safety of that and the requirement for landowners to come in and sign up for that. Part of the consideration is the inspection fee right now. I think we charge $12 for landowners per unit to inspect their units on a regular basis to make sure we meet those life safety considerations.
So do you have the staff then to do that, do you think?
I believe, I will never say I will turn away more staff to do more work. I think there's always, the need is always greater than the current resource.
Because this could generate a lot of housing, which is a good thing. I mean, I think we have people who need it, but I want to make sure that we have planned for the staff to allow this process to occur smoothly.
Absolutely. And it's also investing in programs like, we have Ptolemy to track a number of rental housing throughout a number of different platforms that's available on our website right now for landowners to use, but also a resourcing to leverage that technology. But yes, we have a lot of units to cover in a given year and resources are thin. We're spread thin, but we're also going to live within our budgetary means as well.
Thank you.
Question? I have a couple of questions. So under 18A20. 120 applications. It says, "Applications shall be submitted online and the only exceptions are those who need ADA requirement." So if I'm a homeowner and I want to build an overhead to protect my car and I don't have a computer. So can I come in? Is that, I mean, ADA is not that I don't have a computer.
We, we do that today, sir, and we will continue to accommodate and work with folks the best of our ability. We, a lot of folks need assistance filling out an application. We often take the time to do that, sir. So even though the language says we do, we do have an online system. It's, it's the way of the world. And to submit electronically, if someone needs assistance to submit electronically, we do that today and we will continue to do that.
Okay. Question number two. I, maybe I read incorrectly, but it appeared to me that the hearing examiner was in fact the last word. You just indicated that your examiner does not have the last word. So if the hearing examiner says, I'll mix his determination and I want to appeal that, to whom do I appeal?
The first step would be a reconsideration. That's a process. So if a hearing examiner issues a decision, the first step would be requesting a reconsideration of that decision, whatever merits you want to. For the hearing examiner, they will rule on that, but oftentimes folks can take that higher, which would be Superior Court. Would be the next step in that process.
Okay. And my third question. Permitting process. Love the way it's streamlined. It's really good. From maybe my perspective, maybe from the staff perspective, did we have focus groups or such individuals who are going to be impacted by this new procedure, these new procedures? Have they been asked to provide some sort of feedback, contractors, architects, you know, that's going to affect them? So do we have any kind of feedback?
Great question. A lot of the operational changes that are not subject to the code amendments, again, the code amendments are trying to achieve state law. And that went through a series of not only opportunities at the state legislature for comments for the state building industry, but also local building associations as well that provided a lot of feedback on exactly what that would be. But in addition to, State Department of Commerce has hosted a number of different forums and focus groups and how to identify the reporting, but also the permits system upgrades that are necessary across the state of Washington to effectively implement this as well. As it relates to our local operational changes, yes, the director and myself do meet with architects and business owners and talk about, here are some concepts we would like to implement. That's an ongoing conversation. Were they formal surveys, focus groups or statistical? No, it's just having a conversation who has an invested interest in our processes and our programs and outcomes and having a conversation on the barriers and challenges they have seen over time and how we can institute some changes with the understanding, process and procedures can change to a certain degree. What I cannot change at the local level, at the application level, is what the state building code council requires for energy upgrades to single-family homes. What I can't change at the local level, at the application level, what is a requirement to protect critical areas such as streams and wetlands and shorelines, for example, so.
So just saying that in fact, these architects and contractors have in fact been contacted regarding the changes that we locally can make.
The, in terms of the operational changes, the actual code amendments, sir?
No, not the code amendments, the amendments that, the flexibility that we have here as a city.
Informally, I would say, not formally.
Okay. Any other questions? So at this point, then I'd like to then open the public hearing for 2SSB 5290 concerning consolidating local permit review processes. Ms. Spear, Ms. Devereaux, do we have anybody online?
There's no one online and we did not receive any written comments regarding this issue.
And there's no one here, no one has signed up. Therefore, I declare the public hearing for that portion closed. Next, we have the next portion, which is the draft 2025 comprehensive plan amendment cycle docket list. Who will be presenting that overview?
That will be me, Mr. Chair.
Spear, please.
Thank you. And my apologies to all of you for being remote once again. This time it's for putting up with me remotely. So what we have, you just barely got through the 2024 Big Ten Year Review and I'll talk further about that and how that was handled by the city council this week. But we're now already talking about the 2025 cycle. This is the point in which the docket list or the, the list of actual potential amendments are set, not reviewed. This is the point in which the docket list or the, the list of actual potential amendments are set, not reviewed substantively at all. But just what are the things that are going to be considered when this comes back next spring to the commission and then to the city council? There's things that have to be done by state law and by city code regarding comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. CIPA reviewed, State Department of Commerce reviewed, and then the public hearing in action at the planning commission and the city council levels. The call for applications was done in the month of July. The private application, there were none received privately in that month. I will talk a little bit about one other one that has been brought to the attention of the commission and the council since. There were one other note though, is because some of the items that are included in the twenty five docket list based on state law changes require action by June thirtieth of twenty five by the city. The process will be a little bit faster than it would normally be. So you will be completing your work maybe in April or early May in order to allow council to take their action in time to meet the state deadline. So what you have in your packet, and I'll walk through quickly, is a list of amendments in two categories. There are those that are quote recommended, and that are, those are the ones that really are in response to additional state law changes. And then there are several what I called tentative amendments, meaning it's entirely up to you whether they move forward or not as part of the docket list. And then there will be one more that I'm about to mention as well, where it's not even included in your packet this evening. But there's a thought that you might consider adding it when you take your action at the next planning commission meeting. So to walk through these, I did this at our last meeting, but once more for review. There is a requirement under state bill ESHB nineteen ninety eight to allow co-living housing with in any area of the city that allows at least six multifamily residential units in a housing development. The second is to make updates to the capital facilities, parks and utilities element to comply with the state bill numbered eleven eighty one that was passed this year focusing on climate change and resiliency. This is actually going to be a multi-year process. This is the first biennium that the city has to react to. There will also be changes this bill requires in twenty twenty seven as well as twenty twenty nine to other parts of the comprehensive plan. The third is middle housing regulations, and this is to make sure that the regs that are in place to cover accessory dwelling units and middle housing, or those things that in twenty four's big package was everything from a duplex up to courtyard apartments or sixplexes. That the regulations that are in place by the city meet the state rule that they are no more restrictive on these types of housing units than they would be on the detached single family. And based on your questions to Ms. Silva, there may be an opportunity during this review to look at the ADU maybe pre-approved or pre-designed idea and concept. Meaning there could be some streamlined options for people who are wanting to perhaps put an ADU or more than one on their property. So that's something we could anticipate to between now and next spring. The fourth is regarding, it's a pretty straightforward change in definition for multi-unit residential buildings per again state law. The fifth is residential parking rules consistently, consistency with changes in state language as well. The sixth is a technical glitch that we had when the city code was totally rewritten about five years ago now. We lost part of the regulatory language for civic uses, and so this is just bringing back what was in the code before twenty twenty nine, and there's no, there was no intent to pull it out. It's just the, the loss has been identified and now we need to put it back into code. The commute trip reduction plan is something that the state of Washington requires the city to have. And we have one in place now, but it's time to do the next five-year version that would be in effect from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine. This is something that we've been working closely with Pierce County and other local jurisdictions in our area about, because there are a lot of issues obviously with transportation where the geographic boundaries of a city or county don't count. It's where people are driving, and so it's a regional effort. But this is making sure that we meet the state law of updating our commute trip reduction plan by June of twenty twenty five. And then here's the first of the quote tentative amendments. This is one that Commissioner Larson brought to the planning commission a few months ago. Where he was wanting to take a look at, I'm sorry, no, it's not, excuse me, this is one, that's an option, and it's up to the city council. They need to decide if they would like to allow for the transition of commercial buildings into residential uses. And this is something where they have to say yes to that and also have to place or adopt sales and use tax amendment to allow for it to be funded. And then once they did that, then we could have changes to regulations in place to, to allow that regulatorily as someone were, were to come in for a permit for such a change. So this is something where it would be included in the docket, but then it would be up to the city council to decide if they wanted to take it any further or not.
Miss Spear? So I, will you, we, will you all be asking the planning commission to make a recommendation on zero eight?
What we would be asking from the city's staff is that you would recommend including this in the docket list, so then the city council can talk about it.
Okay.
The ninth is the first of the two that Commissioner Larson brought to the planning commission a few months ago, and this is to expand the current station district subarea to include Springbrook. In his, his recommendation was that those are all parts of the city that could logically be regulated in a similar way. And so there is one goal in the comp plan that talks about redeveloping and bringing subarea plans to places such as Springbrook. And his recommendation is to incorporate it into the station district area. The other one that is coming from Commissioner Larson is the idea of creating some kind of subarea plan for the area or district north of Silicon Boulevard and west of South Tacoma Way. So both of these, nine and ten, the idea at this point again would be just to add this into the docket list. And then have the city council talk about it and decide what type of direction they would provide back to the department about whether to proceed. So we would recommend that you would include it in the docket, but then it would be up to the council to decide if it went any further. And then the final one that's not in this packet, I'll talk about it because you received testimony about it previously and you have received some written testimony again tonight. LRI, which is part of LeMay, is requesting a rezone of one of its parcels here in the city of Lakewood that is currently zoned air corridor one because of its location in relation to the clear zone for McCord Field. Air corridor one has a limited type of uses that are allowed because of the safety concerns within the flight path of the McCord Field aircraft. And they would like to have that entire parcel zoned industrial versus split between industrial and air corridor. So that would be another one for you to consider to add to the docket list, and then council could take it up this fall to decide if they wanted to move any further. So the process schedule, tonight is the public hearing. In October, you would be taking action on the second, and then it would move forward to the city council for their action. Again, this is just setting the list of items that will be substantively reviewed next year. Assuming all eleven of these that I've mentioned happen, then those would all be reviewed in winter and spring, and then starting next spring, everything would come back to you for again, a substantive review. What are the actual language and requirements out of each of these changes that you would then hold another public hearing on? And then the same thing, you would make a recommendation to council that they would take action on before June thirtieth of next year. And with that, happy to answer questions or have the chair open up the public hearing?
Questions for commissioners? How are you thinking?
I did have a question about the twenty five, twenty twenty five oh two updates to comp plan capital facilities element. And mainly it's really about the utilities element. I don't know the utilities element well enough at the city to know if, to know what it entails and its completeness, but will the update, since utilities are provided by other utility providers? And especially like water and sewer as we're getting into afford, you know, allowing for more housing. More housing creates demand, additional demand on existing capacity. So I would guess that the utilities element, does it want to? How far does it go in addressing the demand on the future demand as a result of housing on utilities that aren't provided by the city?
That issue was actually covered as part of the twenty four process. We reached out and worked with the Lakewood Water District, with the Pierce County Sewer Utility, and then the three electrical or power utilities for the city to show them where we saw the additional density coming for in housing and whether there was planned capacity in all those parts of the city from each of those utilities. So that's been discussed already. It continues also with the Unified Sewer Plan update that the county is currently conducting, and we're partnering with them as well there. This change from the state law eleven eighty one is really focused on climate change and resiliency. So it's looking at how the utilities, for instance, the power in particular, where is their power coming from? Is it being generated from a coal? Power source, or is it hydro, for instance? That's usually the two choices for us here in Washington State. So it's just making sure that the utilities are very closely connected to this update, and we already have our, at least quarterly, the city meets with them all the time. But there will be additional meetings with all of the utilities to make sure we have their most recent plans that they independently adopt incorporated in our data for our compliance with eleven eighty one come next summer.
Are the maps, are there, so then do we have maps indicating the future planned, or I guess whatever the, yeah, the future planned sewer size, water main size?
Yeah, the utilities themselves have those and update those every once in a while. So we are aware of, again, the current Unified Sewer Plan, which is what the sewer utility uses to track not only what's in the city of Lakewood, but also where everything that's coming from its whole sewer surface area, and same with Lakewood Water.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess regarding the tentative amendments. I can, generally I can support those, but I would say that I think twenty, twenty twenty five oh nine and twenty twenty five ten, since they came from, I think primarily the suggestion of Commissioner Larson, and he's not here. I don't know that it would be fair to have discussion on them without, without him being able to kind of provide more information about, about why and how they were on or what he was thinking behind these amendments. But I would say that in general, I do, I do support twenty twenty five ten and including that forward for council's discussion because I have, I have thought for some time that I think that the International District and the area along South Tacoma Way in general is seeing and is ripe to see demand from future development at some point. I, I just think that there's a lot of variegation of land use along that entire corridor and having a a comprehensive subarea plan that includes design standards and corridor expectations for just economic performance and housing availability, if, you know, if, if it's suitable. And, you know, setting, setting that area up for kind of vibrancy and success. I think that that, I feel like that is kind of the next step. And I do think that, you know, even though the city has spent a lot of time and resources over the years in trying to get downtown up to a, a, a certain expectation, I think that, I feel, I mean, I feel like the market is kind of reaching the point where, you know, if we don't have a plan that sets some parameters up for success for outside of downtown. You know, we may kind of lose out on some, some opportunities to shape a neighborhood and shape that part of the city. So for, so for that aspect, I, I would support including that. I think Mr. Mister Larson, when he talked about it, he had specific ideas about a particular parcel that he was interested in. So, so I recognize that too, but I just wanted to share my thoughts with the commission.
Thank you. And just to let everybody know, Mr. Larson is traveling this month, but he, as far as I know, will be there on October second to be able to talk about these two things before you would take action. And if for whatever reason you decide you need more time, then you have that ability as well.
Thanks, Mr. Larson. Would appreciate us waiting to have a discussion when he is, he is here. Agreed. Does anyone have any other questions regarding these docket lists? In that case, I'd like to open up at this time then the public hearing. Or, excuse me, draft twenty twenty five comprehensive plan amendment cycle docket list. Do we have anybody virtually?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
And we don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We do have the written comments, and I should have mentioned that. So LRI did submit a letter that I believe was forwarded to you this afternoon by Ms. Deveraux. And in those comments, they are asking that you would incorporate their request for re-zoning the portion of their parcel, and that's described from AC one to industrial. And at this point, this is adding it to the list, not making the decision. That happens, of course, with the rest of the amendment review next year.
And that would be, it would be proposal number eleven then listed.
Correct.
Okay, and we have no comments from the general public, no one has signed up. Therefore, I'd like to close the public hearing for this particular amendment. So we, moving on, we have no unfinished business. We have new business. And who will speak to the shoreline master program?
We'll take that one as well, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Spear.
Okay, so again, this is something that is related somewhat to what you just barely finished, the big twenty four package. If you recall, there was some changes made to how the critical areas ordinance was going to regulate certain waters, whether they be smaller lakes or creeks in the city versus the shoreline master program. At that point, in that package, no changes were made to the shoreline master program itself. So what we're doing now is what's called a locally initiated shoreline master program or SMP update to make some relatively minor changes, simply to make sure that the SMP now is consistent with what our critical areas ordinance regs read like, so there's no confusion or out of sync regulations between the two documents. So as I just mentioned, there was a decision in twenty twenty four's big package to change based on best available science, certain buffer widths, for instance, but it was also which water bodies would be governed by the shoreline master program versus the critical areas ordinance. And also the SMP and the shoreline restoration plan, which have been standalone documents kind of hanging out there in the ether since they were first adopted in twenty nineteen, bringing those into the actual municipal code. It titles sixteen dot ten and sixteen dot twenty in order to just have them for ease of reference for anybody and everybody looking for them. So again, now what we're doing is just and exclusively edits to the shoreline master program to reconcile the CAO changes that were already adopted by council, and then what needs to be changed in the shoreline master program to be consistent. The next time that the city is actually required to do a full review of the shoreline master program is in twenty twenty nine. And so this is really just limited to a couple of things to be consistent with the twenty twenty four action. And here you see the first, it's in the area of critical areas. It's simply updating the ordinance number and when adopted to talk about critical area regulation in the city's code. And secondly, again, updating the code references because of changes made in the twenty twenty four big process. And secondly, again, updating the code references because of changes made in the twenty twenty four big process. And then you have underlined here, what's been recommended by the Department of Ecology. The city has been working with Department of Ecology staff, and this is actually a joint review. And your public hearing tonight is the joint, I'm sorry, no, it's not. Tonight is the introduction. Next meeting, you will have a joint public hearing that is for both city and Department of Ecology's purposes when it comes to the shoreline master program change. So this is just clarifying that you still have to meet mitigation sequencing and no net loss requirements. Even when you have emergency actions take place. And where there's utility line trenching proposed, it shall not be allowed in category one or two wetlands and is discouraged in category three or four. These are all again recommended by the Department of Ecology. The final one, again, changing some code references because certain pieces have been removed from the shoreline master program and updated in the critical areas ordinance in title fourteen of the municipal code. Finally, and the biggest change that you would actually see is the removal of wetland buffers from the shoreline master program. They are moving over into our critical areas ordinance. And so where you have critical areas outside of a shoreline of the state, which is of a certain size lake or a river or creek that has a certain amount of cubic feet per second movement or volume. These are all going to be now regulated under title fourteen and taken out of the shoreline master program. We do have tonight the introduction and today is also the start of the public comment period both for the city and for Department of Ecology. This is going for a month. So September eighteenth through October seventeenth, people can submit written public comments. The the actual public hearing will be held October second, as I mentioned, so your next meeting. And then in November will be when you would take action and then it moves on to the city council. Just one thing that's slightly different because this is a a different animal as something that's happening jointly between the city and the Department of Ecology. The joint hearing that you will be holding is the only one the city will hold. There will not be a public hearing at the city council level. They will take action the week after they hear the introduction on December second. And with that, again, happy to answer questions or have you open it up to the public hearing? I'm sorry. Cold medicine. Happy to answer any questions.
How will the structure of the meeting change with the with the including the Department of Ecology? Well, we have a representative from Ecology here.
They may be here virtually, but I've been working with Heather Bush. She's our regional coordinator for the Department of Ecology's Regulation of Shoreline Master Programs. So she probably won't say anything, but she'll be in attendance virtually. And then what we will do on your agenda is it would start with kind of a special meeting, if you will, where it's nothing but that public hearing. And then we would move right immediately after that into your regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Questions, commissioners? Okay, we have no questions for you, Miss Spear.
Okay.
Thank you. So next we have the next steps and Miss Spear, you will give us a little bit of a summary.
Thank you. So I've mentioned it a couple of times just indirectly, but this last Monday night, the city council took final action on the twenty twenty four periodic review. They adopted the three ordinances ultimately. One was specifically the plans, the comprehensive plan, the new Silicon One Brook Sub Area Plan, and then changes to both the station district and the downtown sub area plans. There was a separate ordinance that had all of the regulations in it. And then there was a third ordinance that was where there was going to be a change to what the minimum size had to be and where master plan developments could happen in the downtown sub area. So the meeting discussion by council was about two and a half hours. They really dove into a couple of issues deeply, one of which was that downtown master plan development. They wanted to discuss and come to consensus as best they could on whether or not it made sense to drop the minimum acreage from ten to five. And also whether or not by doing so, that would mean a master plan developer did not have to do mixed use in their project. And the code does not allow that, meaning even if it's a smaller project, there does still need to be mixed use in a project. And so that I think put puts some concerns to rest. And then the other questions about that were from council members wondering why this was being proposed at all, the smaller minimum size. And it was in reaction to a couple of things. First of all, the biennial reviews that have been happening since twenty eighteen for the downtown has shown that there hasn't been as much develop as development as anticipated or desired by council. So this was a way to try to make things move a little faster, perhaps by making the master plan development option more available, given the size of acres that might be available in the downtown. And it's also in reaction to conversations that have been had by P P W staff with developers looking at different parcels. The Q F C in particular over in the Colonial area. And when they saw the ten acre minimum, it it just wasn't doable, given the size of the parcel that was being talked about. So after some back and forth and can consideration, the planning commission, I'm sorry, the council finally voted with two people gone, so there were a total of five of them there, three to two on that to pass the change. When it came to the regulations, they talked about at some length, the short term rental regulations, which you took up both in twenty three and twenty four. And it was more about whether or not short term rentals could be limited to one or some other number per owner. When you passed it on to them, it said that only or each permittee was only allowed one short term rental in the city. The way they changed it was to take that limitation out. So a permittee, whether that is a an outside business or whether that is a homeowner with wanting to put something in their yard, there is no limit to the number of short term rentals they could have in the city. If somebody owns more than one house in the city, they could put ADUs on multiple lots. Let me look at my notes really quick to see if there's anything else that they spent a lot of time on. Oh, there was the addition in the comprehensive plan by a couple of council members, some new goals and policies related to protecting the city's shoreline and public access to the shoreline. They wanted to avoid in the future what's been happening and some of you may be aware of with a lot of consternation about whether you sell a street end, whether you improve a street end and whether they can be used for public access. And by the end of the meeting, those changes to say city, you will be really strategic in buying and maintaining and improving street ends. But at the same time, leaving open the option to be able to say, hey, this is a really low value street end. If we were to actually sell that property and use the funds for something else, we could do more net good and allow more net public access with that type of an action. So those were added to the actual comprehensive plan. And I think that's it. So again, thank you very much for all your work over the last two years on the twenty four review. And thank you as well to Chair Estrada for being there for that conversation. The other thing that Mr. Estrada asked me to talk about tonight a little bit was just the phrase legislative process and what does that mean? There was some conversation about that by the city attorney and then the mayor. But I have used the term in a different way in some of the things, including some of the PowerPoints tonight. So legislative process in in my way of using it with you, the Planning Commission usually refers to just bringing something to you, the Planning Commission, and then given your authority under the city's code. You are the legislative body that takes first crack at land use related code changes or zoning changes. So having this public hearings that you've had tonight, for instance, and then the actions that you would take by resolution recommending some form of those things or recommending denial of something in in theory. That's part one of the legislative process for the city. And then that same thing is repeated at the council level. They have final decision making authority unless and until someone were wanting was wanting to appeal their decision in court as they may be authorized to do for certain things. So that's the legislative process that you will hear from staff most often. Legislative process as was referred to when there were some questions given to the mayor about being involved in the vote on whether or not to vacate property on, I think it's a hundredth street. This last Monday night, the city attorney talked about legislative process. And in that sense, she was referring to the fact that the city council as a whole, as a single body, takes action to approve or deny whatever it is looking at through ordinance, through motion, through resolution. It is not an individual city council members authority to approve or deny. It's the group as a whole. But that is relating to compared, if you think back to your constitution, the U S Constitution, there's the three branches of government, right? You've got legislature, which is Congress or in the state legislature or city councils. You've got the judicial branch, the courts, and then you have the executive branch. So nationally, that's the president. Here in the city of Lakewood, it's our city manager. And then in the state level, it's the governor. So there's those three branches and what she was talking about, and then they were talking about from the dais with the council was that they are the legislative body. They set budget and they adopt policy or regulation. Executive in the city is the city manager and the staff that he oversees. The judicial is the courts. So it was saying that city council, you as a whole are going to make a legislative decision here on whether or not to vacate the street end in that particular instance. Mayor in this case is not doing it as an individual. It's the whole group that makes a vote and that's why it proceeded as it did. So happy to answer more questions if you have any.
Any questions? We have no questions. Thank you. Appreciate you very much.
Sure.
So our next step was a report from City Council liaison. Ms. Bokey is not here this evening. And upcoming meeting scheduled October and then November the sixth, October the second, November the sixth. Anything about those particular days?
Just to, as you just said, we, there is no meeting this, the third week of October. If you'll note, there's only one in October. And then the next one is November. That's because council is in the middle of its budget process. And October sixteenth is actually the night they'll be in council chambers talking to specific departments about their budgets. So no planning commission meeting that evening. But in October, it will be the shoreline master program hearing and then moving that along. And then getting ready to start talking about maybe some urban forestry status updates. The tree inventory is well underway, as well as the urban heat mapping of areas in the city that get hottest when the weather is warm. And how that is all going to influence our climate change planning going forward. So that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Any comments regarding any other subject? Like to just thank Ms. Silva for her role in opening the Lakewood Library last Thursday. She was there and they appreciated her professionally. Thank you. Thank you very much. So what a library. Mr. Herr.
I do have one, Mr. Chair. Even though we have no public here tonight for the public hearing, I would like to say how much I've appreciated the discourse that's happened with regard to the one hundredth street decision. This has been an issue that came up and it brought the city out and I think people are taking part in the in the process of running the city and being involved and and it's it shows that they care and it shows, I think it speaks volume to our council and how our council interacts with our community and vice versa. And I just want to say thank you to the to the community for participating.
And I think it also brought to light the fact that the issue is concerning public access to to the waterways, or shall we say lack of in many cases. Again, thank you, Mr. Herr. Anyone else comment? Comments? With that being said, and thank you all very